Far right. Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Kim Hart.
Barbara Karlberg.
All board members are present and we do have a forum. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
We have a flag.
We do.
We do have a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move directly into information discussion item 3A, overview of design for rebuild of Pima Elementary School. All right, Louis.
Thank you.
You're up.
Thank you. Good luck. Call the local shelter for an emergency aid.
Before you introduce the team, maybe I could just set the stage?
Sure.
So, just to take you back for a moment. So, we've got Hopi, Pima, and HoboCon. And so, sometimes I get asked the question, why is one in front of another, etc.? The board picked the first three. Hopi, Pima in the front in the fact that we knew it was the most complicated and it has proven true to be so. But each one of these brings a complication. I want you to understand that at any time, at any stage, one can slow up and one can get ahead of it. Right now, Pima is moving forward. That doesn't mean that in six months, HoboCon will catch up and there'll be nose to nose. One of the reasons that we pushed Pima forward is if you will recall, excuse me, I'm sorry. If you will recall, Pima has a curricular shift going on simultaneously. We felt it was in the best interest for Pima to open as a new school while its brand-new curriculum was being done. So, this year, the teachers being trained in traditional and when the school opens next year, the traditional curriculum will be in place. We're trying to time those. We're doing the best we can to time those. That may or may not occur based on what may hit us in complications along the way. But that was the kind of the final decision in that process through that discussion. Not that one is more important than the other. Simply curriculately, it's where we're living. So, at this time, we're ready to show Pima Elementary School and where we're headed with that. And so, Mr. Hart, would you take that over?
Thank you very much. Governing board, President Karlberg, Dr. Birdwell, and Sandra. I'm pleased to tell you tonight that what we've done is we've actually combined two of the major architectural firms to work together for Pima. This is an effort to try to expedite, if you will, some of the architectural engineering drawings so that we can get this moved forward. I'd also like to say that we've actually presented this to the committee that's established there for Pima. The principal, Alexis, is here and she was at that meeting. And I think without a doubt, I kept seeing the heads going up and down. This is great. This looks good. And I was just really pleased that Alexis was there to actually bring that on. So, there's two parts of the discussion that we're going to do. We're going to present to you what's called the elevations or what it's going to look like on the frontals, the buildings, the classrooms, things like that. And the second part is we have court construction here that's going to go just briefly through the basing of construction because although Hopi is complicated, this is a complicated build too. There's not any K-Loft with any build here. For example, on this one, we have aerial utility lines that's going to have to be put underground because right where they're at is going to be a playground. And the fortunate thing is with this site, we were able to flip the site and not touch the ball field. So, that little community for the ball field could stay functional and they were extremely happy. So, I know we're limited on time today because I had to leave early for another meeting. However, I'd like to introduce you to Tom with Orca Winslow and then I'll let you do the introductions from there.
Great. Thank you, Louis. And Dr. Birdwell, thank you very much. Governing board, I'm pleased to be here today. Not tonight, today. We have Potama Garcia is an architect in our office that's really going to run the show for me and she's really pulling the levers to make this happen. And we have Tammy Caraway, our partner in this adventure. So, I think we're working really well together. And what we did was Tammy said, would you take the lead on the design concept and the classroom building, which is the first out of the ground? And she'll take the other two buildings on. So, it's a nice partnership where we can work together and see success for our client. That's what it's all about.
Yeah, and this is a very unique situation. We're working with two architectural firms. Normally, we take a project, you have one firm. But these two are both working in the district and were gracious enough and such good partners that they were willing to work together to meet our timeframe because we were trying to meet the timeframe of the curriculum. So, when I met with the owners of these two companies, I said, I have a challenge for you that is unusual, but I'm asking that you consider it. And they were gracious and say, you know what? Our two teams get along well. We can work together. We will work together to meet the timeline of the district to make sure that that curriculum occurs. So, this is a unique situation when two architectural firms actually come together on the same design on a project like this. At least it's very unique in the educational field. So, thrilled that Orca Winslow and Hunt Caraway are such good team players.
And in certain instances, we will team with other architects as well. If we're working outside the state of Arizona, we may team with a local architect. If there's an architect that has a specialty such as envelope roofing or something like that, that would be a benefit to our client. Again, it's looking at what do we need to deliver the best service? What is the best thing for our client? So, our opportunity here is pretty exciting. And we always want to step back. And actually, the first meeting with Alexis that I went to, I had no drawings. It was kind of weird. I didn't have anything to point to. We wanted to come out and see the context, see the school, see what we had to work with before we come out with ideas. So, obviously, we've identified or Hunt Caraway has developed a prototype. We furthered the prototype in plan four to benefit our client. But we also looked at that prototype in third dimension, elevation wise. So, we have a little study here. We drove around the neighborhood and we started picking up on some of the context that we'd been dropped in the school into. There's a number of really nice houses. We call it mid-century modern. Ralph Aver was an architect that did a number of these houses. But when you step back and say, oh, 1,700 square foot house, you don't want to apply all the same principles to a 70,000 square foot building. There's high volume and in the gym multipurpose area. So, you start applying these directly, you have some challenges and it's kind of out of context. But so, we want to kind of put our sunglasses on and look at these houses and see what could we extract out of it to give a contextual response. We have the vertical slender columns. That's very popular in the mid-century modern. Push and pull on block. And you see this in some of the new buildings that are going up where they're taking block and pushing it out and pulling it in. Gives a texture to the surface. Thin overhangs. Overhangs are defining an entry, but they're very thin and they're very light in nature. Horizontal elements, flying walls that go in front to screen off a house even more horizontal. Horizontal, oh, I can't say it. Horizontality. Decorative block, that was very common. And we're seeing it come back again in the midway where you take block, you put it up and it has openings there for view, for air movement, but you still have the secure part that you were trying to create. And we're seeing it in low wells as well, turning block sideways and allowing it to break essentially. Bright colors. Bright colors were really common in the mid-century modern. But at the same time, we're thinking of the school. Okay, let's think about color for the school. Elementary schools tend to have, tend to want to be, you know, your basic colors, your bright colors. You want younger children to have that excitement. You want to kind of fuse that into their heart. As the grade level goes up, you get into middle school, you get into high school and higher and higher. They become more rich in color, rich in nature. And it's more sophisticated because the students that are at that school want to feel appropriate to that context. So, we thought maybe a little splash of color might be nice. So, a couple case studies I want to share with you, some projects that we've done that have done just this in the context that's similar to your opportunity here at Pima. First off, Dr. Birdwell brought the board out to see a project in Hayley that Hunt Caraway did. Handsome project, very nice design. And so, I want to kind of recall that for a second. And the next slide, it's going to be a little bit harder to see. Creighton Mount of Vista, this one on AIA Award. It's a replacement school. There was a school there in the neighborhood. It was amongst an orchard and mid-century modern. And so, a number of the elements we picked up in this design reflected that context.
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Would you stand on the other side of Dr. McCauley so the microphone picks you up? Right there. Yeah, right there.
I'll look at that. I'll look over you.
Hang on, maybe I'll sort of something else out for you. Put this around your neck and boom.
Well, hang on a minute. Now, what's next?
If we're unhappy, we just push a button and you just go somewhere.
You guys start sweating, you know what?
Now you see how school teachers feel. This is what they use.
So, in the neighborhood here, this element right here is that block that's turned. It has that opening. It's a stairwell that has breathing and you can capture as you're going up the stairs, the students can look out and see through it. This element right in here, again, it's kind of hard to see in such a small entity, but a lot of houses have this gingerbread at the entries. They have wood spindles and this kind of thing. Well, that's actually steel. It's not wood. But we wanted to pull an element out of the neighborhood and put it in. There's similar pieces just like that, the push and pull of block. The landscaping is actually reflective of an orchard. So, it's very structured and you can't see in these photos. But again, trying to pick up on elements from the building down into the landscape. Next slide. And this is a little bit more aggressive in its interpretation of old college. Again, vertical elements that are picking up on that gingerbread of the entries. The push and pull of the block here, this is actually a split base block with a smooth block giving the wall a texture. And again, some graphics that kind of start recalling, some color that starts to play on the surface, breaking that large volume down so that you have a building that is more human in scale. And this, this is the medicine replacement school here. There are the elements again that are reflective of that community. But I like this slide for this purpose right here. This is a clear story in the meeting center. A larger space in the classroom and it was a nice daylight coming in above. When we went to the school, we looked and walked around and we're trying to pick up on something. What would be special if they didn't have it? They would miss it and they would be kind of remiss or more something like that. What we came back with was daylight. They probably don't recognize it today because it's kind of a backdrop. But if we take it away from them, you know, the students there, the sight of a bird flying by, the sight of a cloud in the sky, if it's going to rain, that connection to nature. We felt it can't be achieved through a skyline. You know, it looks like a LED light. We need to have that connection. So, we went in and we developed a clear story. When we get to the plan, is that?
It's a subdoctorate.
Okay, subdoctorate. So, the classroom building right here, for a number of reasons, it's single store, so we're not impacting the neighborhood with a tall building up against neighbors. It's compassionate in the sense it's all internal circulation so we don't have students going out on the outside to give from one class to the next. It's safety and security minded. It's also energy efficient because it's a, the wall surface is minimized. You don't have finger wings with a lot of surface. But what happens is in the middle then, you start to lose that daylight. And we said, that's not good. We got to come up with an innovative way to introduce that daylight, the connection to nature back into this building. So, as you can see in the plan here, this quarter here and this quarter here, eight foot wide, nine foot tall, normal-sized quarter. But these classrooms that border it don't have that daylight. So, what we did was we dropped this down and dropped that down and we have clear stories up there. And we have a section coming up next to us. Then here's the hallway and here's the other hallway. And sun can come in and bounce down into the classroom. A student standing right here can look out that clear story and see if it's cloudy, if the birds flying by. So, we've introduced that connection to nature within the core of the classroom building. Yes?
So, how low is that ceiling for that drop-down area?
Okay, right here, that is nine foot. The normal classroom's height is nine foot also. And then we have this little well that goes up right in here that goes up, I believe it's probably about 16 feet, something like that. The windows, we have three windows per classroom. They're two foot six high. They're six foot four wide. There's three of them. So, you have three nice big windows in the classroom. And then in the plan, there's a collaboration space which is joined by all four of the classrooms. You've seen it in the other plans. A lot of glass of that connectivity. That has one window also. So, it has that connection to nature as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, let's see, let's go next.
That's east-west facing.
Yes. Number of features, I think Tammy's probably shared with you the design of the admin in the past, but we'll just highlight it really quick. Some nice features that they've developed in this plan. Safe and secure entry, has a restroom and conference right off the entry. You check in. If you're cleared, then they can buzz you into the school. But you can also function outside that secure line if you need a restroom where you have to be in the conference room. We have the two maker spaces that are also computer labs and very flexible in nature. There are access from the outside so that students that are out in the classroom building can get to them. The library is a special space. It can be used for services on Sunday. It can be used for community meetings during the week at night. So, it has its own entry and it has its own restroom. So, it has a nice function to it. The gym cafeteria, survey area here. A mini gym off the side so as food is being served or set up, that function still can happen for PE. We have three music suites. This plan is not reflective of it, but we had through our last meetings, we went through the choreograph of the periods and all that stuff and determined we needed to add band, chorus, and string.
Actually, they're rotating, so we only had two.
We have two. Okay, so we'll go back to that just a second. Sorry about that. Coming out of the gym, this is the new soccer field. So, as the students are done with their lunch period, they can go out and play. They have direct access. This is shaded and this is shaded. We have a staff restroom, a small staff eating area here. As we understand it, a lot of staff will probably end up back in the classroom or with the students. So, we want to give options.
Hang on, Tom, go back there just a minute. Just one point up. In the purple section at the top, you know, those are the restrooms for the children.
Yes.
And so, they have access also to the soccer field so they can go out of the soccer field and come back.
So, we talked a little bit with the plans. We talked about the context. Let's talk about what this building would look like. When we looked at the neighborhood, we saw red brick. Rich feeling, good-looking red brick. We also picked up on some of the notions of the texture. So, what we wanted to do was not put it everywhere, but put it to the point of public entry. So, you're defining the entry to the school, the three buildings, with special materials. As the students get to know the school, as the community gets to know the school, they know where the public entries are. So, this is the admin. This is the student services area. We have the red brick. We have massive red brick here. It has a rich feel to it. And then we have the split. I'm going to get zapped. We have smooth concrete block and we have split base concrete block. So, this horizontal line, the plater elements you saw in the mid-century modern with a texture to it. And then we started picking up a little bit of a bright yellow, that playful color in elementary school to give it some zing at that entry area. The balance of the school for economies and for our value is EPIS. It's a stucco system. That's a synthetic stucco system. So, it will be pretty much neutral in nature to give this entry, these entries a nice, a nice strong feel. This is the cafeteria gymnasium. Again, red brick, a scored, a split base and smooth block and then a yellow element at the back. So, this would be where events happen. If you're having a concert, a Thanksgiving event or something like that, this is where the public would be entering into that multipurpose space there. And then the classrooms, zip over to the classroom area. Here's our classroom building. You can see here, this is a rendering, a 3D model that shows the clear stories. Now, they're going to be actually, like I mentioned, they're going to be segmented. They're not going to be a continuous bunch-based element. You've got the yellow features calling out the entries. We have the red brick as an anchor at the entries. This is the kindergarten area over here. This is the pre-k area here. We want to lower the windows for the littler children so that they can look out. They're not having to look up and brimber. This is an art room right here, so we have nice north light coming on the art room. And out of the fencing. So, we wanted to pull it away. I mentioned that on Mount of Vista, we had the orchard look, the very structured landscaping. We wanted to pick up on that turned block, the block that had a pattern. And instead of just having a lot of hollow metal fencing in front, we determined periodically with this masonry to give it a little bit of a decorative feel to it. Do you see that pop up there? And the flag ceremony. Yes, we were out there. We saw that flag ceremony. And so, that flag ceremony, the flag will be right here so that the students can gather in this area. It's kind of an exciting event to see them. And then there's, the flag boosters aren't illustrated here, but they'll be over here. And the area is over here. So, they'll have direct access out of their classroom into the player. The buses will come in on the backside over here. We're separating parent drop-off from bus drop-off. And I'm giving Potama a run for her money here. We have a long, Hunt Caraway's developed a nice, long parent drop-off which is really going to be valuable for getting the cars off the street. We've been there during, before and after and it's pretty exciting. Yes, and another piece of feedback we got is it'd be nice to have cover walkways all the way through. Well, we do have the requirement to have hard truck access. Back in the day, that wasn't a big requirement, but today it is. But we did extend a canopy system that maybe there's 15, 20 feet we'll go out to dash if it's raining or stay out of the sunlight. But we did extend the canopy system so that we get as much cover as practical for the students. And it's wide too. I believe it's 10 foot wide. So, that'll be nice. And then that's a nice thin element again, picking up on the houses in the neighborhood, the thin elements to the entry. So, that's the design that we're out there sharing with the community. I think on Friday, we had a really, as Louis mentioned, a fun conversation. It seemed to be a lot of support to it. I think it is also something that could be taken to another site and modified and changed. So, it won't look the same. Other materials in other communities, maybe the columns aren't slender and thin. Maybe they're a masonry and thinner. So, the look of it can adapt itself to other locations too. Questions? Sunny Rock. Yes?
Are there elements that are unique in the K-5 versus the 6, 8 areas of this school?
You know, this has some classrooms that it's not unique to K-5.
It's not. It's a K-5 school.
I was thinking. Entry, no question why not.
Yeah, let's hope that kind of works. Never mind.
We should have helped you with that. We should have said, Pima, K-5, tradition.
So, you kind of really glossed over this somewhat. I don't know if it was Louis or you, at the very beginning. But it is a huge service to the community. But I'd like to just expand a little more on it. And that is the undergrounding of the.
Power lines?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, they buy share the site today.
That's going to dramatically increase the home values of that neighborhood.
And I think when you invest in a school too, it draws people back, not only from Charters and other schools, but also into the neighborhood to buy because it's a nice school. I think.
But for the existing homeowners that are there that have visibility of those power lines, the undergrounding is a big win.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
It is.
And I have to say, for the age of the school, it's medicated, it's taken care of very well.
Yes, and I agree.
It is. Absolutely.
So, all the lines are going to be undergrounded? I'm sorry to Hart, but I just, that's a big deal. It's expensive to do.
Ms. Kirby, so what happens is, if I can describe it.
Mr. Hart?
From here, from here you'll see aerial lines. Am I on your way?
You're not loud enough.
I'm not going to kiss you. I'll just stand close to you, okay? So, anyway, the aerial lines right now start here and they go all the way through and actually serve this community here on the other side too. So, all of these, every utility you can think of is there. You have power. You can have cable TV. You have telephone, telephony. You also have, here, you have gas. We have irrigation that comes through here. So, it's a big deal and it's a lot to take on to do that. But in order to make this the campus that it needs to be so you can utilize this as a playground, those utilities have to be underground.
Was that in the initial budget?
It wasn't in the initial budget, but it's something that was in consideration to try to still maintain our budget and keep that in there. So, we're doing value engineering all the time.
Okay.
The systems will be sized for future addition. So, when this gets constructed and we start drawing those kids back in, eight classrooms can be added to this side back here. The beauty of that is the contractor can stage, set his equipment and not be interfering in the day-to-day operation. But we can actually add eight classrooms to the backside and the systems will all be set up for that. That's very common in the work we do.
So, what, on a square foot percentage, classroom space only, how much, what's the percentage of classrooms that could be added to what's going to be?
Eight more classrooms.
Forty-five percent. Forty-five percent, 25% increase.
You have eight more classrooms. And let me just show you again. Sorry. Sorry, fellas.
Thirty-two.
Go back to your, those eight classrooms would be added. I don't know if you can see the outline here, but that's where they would be added for that outline. Sorry. So, right now, you have 31 classrooms in this building.
Okay, thank you.
It grew by 75, 100 kids the first year.
And they're all 900 square feet. And so, there's equity in the classroom and Alexis gets to sign the rooms. Now, the next part of our presentation talks.
So, is this four sections?
The plan is for a four-section school. Certainly, four sections doesn't give you 31 classrooms, but that allows for all of the other spaces that you need for other programs.
We predict that this campus will grow probably by 50 students the first year because you're opening a new campus and a curriculum program simultaneously, which will draw back from wherever, Webster wherever. And then, the reason we had to design it with the infrastructure in mind that we could easily add the next section is if this draws the way we feel it potentially could, we can add those next set within a few years, within a year, if this draws the way we feel it potentially could, we can add those next set within a few years, within a year, however we need it, because all of the infrastructure is already in place. So the central system can handle the next eight rooms, excuse me. So it's all set up to go. So if it draws the way we think, then we're prepared to go forward.
Can I cut things... Did I hear you said it was gonna add 75 to 100 kids, but you have eight rooms, but that's because it's four classrooms?
You started doing class sizes, and you could move some of those other programs that are housed there to another campus. So it has the ability to absorb growth right away?
But isn't eight classrooms like 200 kids, not 70?
Oh, no, I'm talking about this, without adding the addition, we can grow.
Oh, okay.
And then, we can add and let it continue to grow.
They may choose to add just four classrooms. But it has the capability, if we're deciding into the electrical mechanical systems, to add even more.
So we might add four, three years past, an additional four. But we just wanted them to design a school that would allow us to grow. We didn't want to be, put it on the back of the property, and then there's nowhere for classrooms to feel connected.
Now, the next part of our presentation, John's gonna talk a little bit about nature, and how we're gonna attack the construction side of it.
Unless you want kids to be careful now.
No. Dr. Brubaker, board members, thank you for having me. Good afternoon. I'm John Thomason of Court Construction. I'm served as a project director for the school's work. So, phase one, while it's been mentioned that Hopi is tight, Pima is just as tight, because yes, we are, you guys would be very nice in letting the ball teams keep their fields, and that's not touching them. So, we're taking, this area right here is our first, where we're putting the classroom building. To do that, our first phase will start in early December, actually, to demo Building K, because the classroom footprint sits on top of Building K. So we're working with Dennis, his crew, with Alexis, they've actually already cleared out that building, which is great, so we can abate and demo that. And with that, that's the fence off here, we're gonna take, one of it is, we wanna condition the school to kind of start losing this area here, and not having it. Plus, our most first thing is keeping the students safe. You know, we wanna keep all the demo on that away from the students, everybody safe. We will slow down, we will spend money to make sure that that happens.
I don't understand, John. Debbie, is there a problem on this thing, on this mic?
It's because it's flipped over.
Oh, oh.
Turn it around. You have it facing the wrong way.
Do we need to... How's that?
He's a constructor.
We'll make it happen.
It was checking your heart rate. Wanted to be sure.
So as I said, demoing the building here, the temporary fences are yellow. Everything else remains, including this current drop-off, as we have it. Our entrance will gonna come off Grand Reef, so really, we're gonna be on the north side, away from all the activity during this first phase. So phase two, you get leave for Christmas break, we come in with presents called buildings. That's when we come in with the classroom building. We are, can't see the drop-off, we are gonna maintain this through our construction. We're still gonna do the new, and this has been revised as of today, to make it a little more convenient for everybody. But we will do as much of the drop-off here for kinder care that will happen, without disturbing this fence area. We're gonna go off the north side again, we're gonna take out part of the playgrounds here. We did look at it Friday, we talked with the building committee, we're gonna take everything here on the west side. We've made it so you can keep that west side playground, Alexis, so hopefully that'll help, not having to shuttle kids all the way to the west. So, the joke was, it was gonna be cardio for PE for the rest of the spring.
So, John, before you leave that, tell them a little bit about your workflow traffic, how you actually have your traffic for...
Workflow, the same thing. We're gonna stay on the north side, coming off Grand Reef. So once again, everything down here, student drop-off, faculty, everything's the same. We're staying here, limiting it that, in and out, no crossover. That's one of the convenient things about this site. And that will be going through December, right up till the end of school. Then summer, we're taking everything, we're kicking you off, everybody goes on summer vacation. That's when the heavy work really starts, because we have to come in, as Louis said, all the utilities that go Grand Reef, north to south, south to north. Those are gonna have to be relocated. All the classroom buildings will be demoed, the remainder of the buildings. One thing we talked originally in our proposal was doing temporary admin in the far east building. We're looking now for timing to make this happen, and also cost. We've looked, we're gonna have spare rooms in the new classroom building, the temporary houses admin there. Now, that's a thought right now, we can change if needed, and it doesn't work going back to it. But it definitely helps us not temporarily putting someone in an existing building, taking out a phase, a third demo phase. So it's one of the things, because this budget is very tight. Right now, all the campuses is making the tightest budget with utilities. And I think originally, the projection was, this was not gonna be the 31 classrooms, but a little bit lower, I think with Richard Budge's seven. So, that's one of the benefits, also working with Hunt Caraway, Tammy, Tom, and OW, with them collaborating, they come up with great ideas, you know, to give us, like, cost-saving ideas. And also, the speed they're bringing this to permit is amazing, working together, so hats off to them. Okay, and then, we're back here, the summer, we got everything, one more. So then, through December, we move in over summer, the end of July, everybody's back in. The fencing line, now we do cut off, we switch, we give you the north and west, we take south and east. We build out the admin and multipurpose, this is where it gets real aggressive for us. At Hopi, we're doing two buildings first, and then one building in the short season. This one, we're doing two buildings in the short season. So the nice thing is, once again, we can separate over here and come in. We have, initially, this will be staff, or at the end, this is staff and bus, but it can be used for drop-off temporarily, for the overflow here, depending on how Alexis or her staff wants to coordinate everything there. But they'll have two points to access the classroom while we're over here. And then, at the end, when we turn over in December, you have, like Tom said, the long drop-off, the cumin areas, give everybody off the street. And then, the play field, this is actually our overlaying this that, we're not gonna leave that part of the building there, we'll take that out. We'll even get rid of the last little part of the playground that's there for the court. So, we just missed taking that green over, apologize for that one. That's just a quick, brief overview of our logistics and scheduling. It is obviously a live document, that as the school needs change, we'll be more than happy to adapt to make sure we meet the school's needs, and obviously, students' safety. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Again, deepest appreciation to all three of you, to Core, Hookup, and Hunt Caraway, working together, being a team, and understanding how important it is to construct and curriculum to come together. I know that Dr. Nance and his team are relieved to know that we can do that, so thank you.
Thank you. Question?
I do have one question. Yes. Rachel Freeman, you're sitting over there just...
Louis, this is a very, somewhat minor question, but it occurred to me on some walk-throughs I did on campuses this week. When we're either relocating an elementary playground, or building a new one, what materials are we putting for the ground?
Softball. What's the softball material at the moment? Tammy, what are we looking at?
It's a resilient.
So no sand.
You had to grab a mark.
So I don't really, here's what I'm most concerned about, is it sand? And if not sand, is it hot?
All right, there you go.
All right, yeah, can you hear us? Sorry.
It'll be a resilient material, and it is not sand.
And it's cool.
Yes, yes, the resilient material is as cool as...
And spongy, yeah.
Awesome.
That's very interesting. Thank you.
And I'll add a couple of those specific questions. The shade structures that are currently there, over playgrounds, that taken down, obviously, held, and then put back up?
Let me help you look. I'll help you with that one. One of them we can salvage, and the other one we can't. Dennis's folks in, and we actually took a look at those, and the one further to south, we can salvage, but we're not quite sure where we'll put it yet. But the other one is not really salvageable, but we're trying to, if we can.
All right, I have one other question that just hasn't come up, as we are rebuilding these elementary schools, and that multipurpose room, it's kind of new to me. The stage, is that included in it, just like in the cafeterias, the old-style cafeteria and performance stage? Is that in that multipurpose room as well, or off, somewhere else?
So, you wanna do that?
Oh, let Tammy talk about it, then I'll add why.
All right, can you go? All right, can you hear me?
All right.
All right.
The stage, there is an area for the stage, but the utilization of square footage was discussed, and we're creating that extra PE activity area, so we have that. And then, we also, with the stage, we also give up square footage to be able to get ramps and steps up. So really capturing the, all the available square footage to be able to put into the gym, the PE spaces, and the learning spaces in that area. So, there is not a raised stage, as you may be familiar with in previous projects, but we do have the ability to have a portable stage that can be set up to use for whether you're during a choral performance, a band performance. So really, you may just need a raised podium area for a presentation. So it's really more adaptable for very specific use.
So what we did was, in order to get more learning space, we shifted the raised stage, which is a heavy cost and a heavy cost. When you do a raised stage, you're gonna have to do a handicap, and you lose a lot of square footage. So to gain back square footage, what we did was, we went back to the same level, with the idea that we would buy portable stage equipment, so that we'd still be able to have stages, have performances. But also lets us move our performances to two different locations. Because we made such a very large physical education room, we can have small performances in there, and we can have larger performances in the gymnasium. So the stage is more like what we use in the secondary, which is a portable stage system, like a wanger. A pulled-up store that can be put and moved anywhere we want.
And it's easy to move?
And it's easy.
So they can easily say, hey, second grade class, play today.
So if I just wanna, one on the grade level, I can actually use that larger PE room, because it's going to have full sound system, full technology, full acoustics, as well as being used for an activity space. It's been also set up for teacher training space. So, that is a multi-use space, that when the cafeteria is feeding, they can use this other space. So what we wanna do is be able to create mobility within spaces.
And is the set stage not important to elementary schools?
A set stage, having a stage is important. Having a set stage, I don't know that that's necessarily the issue, they want a stage for performance, like anybody does. What we're trying to do is grab more space for the teachers, because what they've shared is, they wanted more instructional space. So, performances aren't everyday. So how do you do both? Give them the space for everyday use, and then create performance space?
Well, so is the district purchasing these mobile stages for the schools?
Yeah, be part of our FFAA group.
Okay, and are they, I clearly need to see one, I've never seen what one looks like, and I worry about stability, given that they are mobile and safety. So I need to, I'm sure that that's taken into consideration, so I'd like to...
So, the two different things, one is, if you're talking about acting versus choral performance, or versus a band performance, et cetera. So choral performance are the choral risers. So if we talk about the standard risers, and so what we typically do with the younger kids is, we only do a one-step up. So it's a two-foot rise. It's not the, at the high schools, we do the four-foot rises, but they tend to not fall off. So you do the two-foot rises, and so that it's just a one step and I'm up. And then, it's, depending on the size of the platform, depends on the size of what we're doing. But we'll, we as a district, will own a performing arts stage.
One for the whole district?
No.
So a campus won't have a dedicated one, they'll have to...
Might share between like, two of the schools down here, because their performances aren't necessarily the same. We can buy one for every school, but...
But I think we need to think through this, because I would guess that the holiday performances are all gonna be with the same three days, yeah, kind of thing?
We can put a portable stage in every school, that's not an issue. What we're trying to do is provide more teaching space that the teachers want.
No, and I get that, we just, it's a shift.
And that's...
And it may be okay, I'm just, and that's unique to Pima.
Are the other schools not having them too?
Well, that's kind of why I ask, because as we move forward with elementary schools, this multipurpose room, I assume we're gonna kind of use this model in the future, so that's kind of why I asked. This is really the first one, we hadn't discussed this detail at Hopi yet, so that's...
Hopi has a raised stage.
Yeah, they have.
They got one. We were too far along in the process to go back and reverse that. What we heard was, we need more storage, what we did was, we created more space in order to create the storage. We shifted this model on this one. So, we can shift back, we just lose storage space.
I'm curious, maybe that's a discussion with the principals, and they're guilty, you know, to talk to them about, how often do they really use them? Because they do historically know what the calendar looks like, and it may be, I mean, spelling bees, it's, I mean, it's a lot more than just performances.
I remember my child being in elementary, I don't know what they're doing to them.
My experience is, the amount of time a stage is used is very minimal, compared to the amount of time that you're in school. Yes, during certain particular weeks in the school year, it's used more often. For the vast majority of the school year, it's not used at all. I've seen stages used as classrooms, when schools are lacking in space, and in those cases, they're never used for anything else other than a classroom. What Dr. Brubaker was talking about, in terms of using a portable stage, is very common, I've seen it many places. You know, whether you have your own or not, I think is a question we'd have to talk about. Where you keep it? You know, how small does it fold up to, where you keep it in the off-time is a question. But, that's a scheduling issue, that's a logistics issue, and I'm sure we can figure out without a problem. But, a full stage, while it's very nice to have, it's used a very small amount of time in the scope of a school year.
And the reality is, my experience is, the stages of the elementary school, you don't have the appropriate acoustics anyway, to do different kinds of performances that are being done there. So, and we're not suggesting that we put those in going forward either, so...
You know, and also my experience, you're talking about band concerts, they don't fit on the stage anyway. You've got any band concerts in the middle of the floor anyway, wouldn't fit.
If anything, the stage is kind of in their way, because they can't be, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, and I will tell you that in the choral room, the risers are there all the time. So the choral, any choral risers you shoot, all my experience has been, I buy the choral risers to be moved. Because they need to be used in the classroom, but then they're used when during a concert. We do the same thing at the high schools, we move the risers out. And wanger has a wonderful, lightweight, portable, top-of-the-line wangers, top-of-the-line choral risers that are used in schools, all the way from.
You know, it might be, that is an opportunity to maybe move some of these elementary performances to the middle school, to start getting the kids connected to their middle school.
Absolutely. Or you can have high schools, high schools have some beautiful schools.
Yeah, better acoustic.
Or remember Kravitz? Do we know if the utility companies have any type of rebate program, or willing to share in the costs of burying their lines? Because it's a benefit, it would be goodwill, we're talking about schools, good publicity for them, and it's a benefit to themselves, to the utilities as well.
Commissioner Kravitz, if I can answer that, or at least hit. We just, with Pima moving up, we're just setting up meetings with utility companies.
Okay.
And I've had experience with lowering stuff, out of Central Zone College in Apache Junction, we took a half-mile, lowered it, and they were very, I won't say they gave it away, but they definitely worked with the community college to lower the cost for that.
Oh, good.
Because it did benefit them also. Like you said, they're big into getting lines down, because then they don't have to worry about the storms knocking it down. So while usually they do not give away free, it's a lot different than if we were commercial development, or want to lower them, and they'll charge you for it.
Oh, good, thank you.
And we're just starting those meetings next week, and Louis will obviously be updating with that information.
I just want to clarify this, so, because I just did a little math. What is the school being built, for how many students? So one ended, oh, is it?
Tom, or Tammy, do you remember when I said how many students, save number, we gave you to build the school at 31 sections, was for how many kids?
It's not 31 sections, it's 31 classrooms.
I'm sorry, 31 classrooms.
But that's a four-section, a four-section school is about 600 kids.
Because when you do the 31, you hear that, I just wanna get that clarified, so people aren't doing what I'm doing.
Those are ELL programs, special education programs, preschool programs. So, but if you go by the number of sections, a four-section school is 600 students.
But they will have a preschool.
It does have a preschool.
And that's gonna be built for two classrooms, so that's how many kids.
How many preschoolers are you running today? You run two preschools at how many students?
Twenty-five in one, and in the holiday one that starts on Monday, that's 14.
So she's running...
But your maximum capacity could be fifty?
Okay.
Just so that we have that clarified, definitely.
Or number Kirby?
So for the preschool and the ELL, the special ed, are those classrooms the same size as the K5 classrooms, so that...
Interesting that you asked that question, because we had a wonderful conversation in our office about that. There's a very, varying theories on that particular issue of, well, do I take an ELL classroom and make it smaller with the idea that there are fewer students, or a special education classroom? Well, then that depends on the programming inside there. What we decided to do is, we would make those classrooms all the same size, so that if we moved a program off the campus, it still could be used as a general education classroom. But we did consider that, of, do you take and make them 600 square foot versus 900? And our design was to leave everything at 900, so that the building in the future could flex its programming. We debated it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Or comments?
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Very excited.
And we know that you love Board meetings, so you're welcome to stay.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to information discussion item 3B, 2016 bond and override update.
All right, so I believe this is a tag team between Ms. Smith, Mr. Hartwell, who will have to stand close together, I guess, or speak loud. I know how those teachers feel when those things don't work. Can you hear me?
Uh, good.
It's on.
Sort of?
Okay. I don't think it's on, is it?
I don't think it's on. Is it?
Who wants, where is that? Where's the, where's the hatch?
That helps.
Where's the hatch? That's what I want to know. If I can pull it up.
Just move over.
Just move over?
That's, that's better.
All right.
Closer to, closer to that microphone.
Why, what is this one? Um, I, I would like to watch. All right, so what we have done is a basic, does that, can everyone see that?
No.
Well, see, that makes it really easy for me to reconcile everything.
So I just asked that for the audience, if we can use our outdoor voices a little bit because as we're working through the sound system in here, it's very difficult for people to hear. Maybe when we're asking a question, a little more projection, your stage voice.
No problem.
So what we have done here, and we didn't get, I haven't seen it projected up on the big board, so let me just explain that these categories going across are what the voters approved when they did the override. So what we've done, for instance, you have a budget for school rebuild of $129 million. And in FY '17, we only spent the 19, this is not the one we have, because I fixed those colors. Grabbed the wrong one. All that worked, and I grabbed the wrong one. So we'll get a clean up a little bit more. But in the school rebuild last year, the year that ended on June 30th that we're just now closing out, we spent $1.9 million. We spent $811,000 this year, but this is not the updated one, so I know it was more. I apologize. I'll have it right for Tuesday. But we have encumbrances of $11 million, so we have a balance in that category of $115,000. That's just a summary sheet. When you come over here to the back, you see each site that has been approved by the governing board, and we have some other spaces here. We'll run the budget out for the additional schools that are to be built from this budget. And then we have our encumbrances down here, and all of these link to the summary page. And I apologize, I have, I have the wrong one here, so this is a little embarrassing, but that's all right because it's a worst day. We'll have it fixed for Tuesday. If we look over here at, the athletics is the easiest one to follow along right now. The budget that we have approved for schools that are in progress, the fields are getting wrapped up, is $7.2 million. And right now, we're running over budget up to a potential of $67,000. But this includes encumbrances here that our POs that are open, that have not been closed, so the final billing isn't in. But we have every reason to believe that it will be in budget with this exception. One of the things we did not plan on having, which is interesting that Board Member Kravitz brought it up, is we have IGAs with the city of Scottsdale. All of these schools are in Scottsdale, so we did not get a break on our utility connections. We have an IGA, but they did not waive development fees, and they considered the new water meters a development fee. So, this was my budget, it gets blown out. And so that was $88,000 that we did not have in the budget. So the fact that we project to be over by '67 means our accurate transactions were current. And Tuesday, I'll be updated numbers on everything and a much prettier chart thanks to the advice of some people that did a review of this.
Yeah, and we also had some extras for the fields that we didn't count. You can't count on the weather when you're building, especially if you're building a football field. So we had, sorry, tank issue. So if you, if you think about some of the monsoons that we had, the field that was hit worse, of course, was Chaparral. And so we had to actually spend money to extract dirt and mud out of that field so that we could, we could recompact and put new soil in. Otherwise, we still wouldn't be ready for that field. We have a ballgame coming up next week. We're doing a final walkthrough on that on Monday. But we did have complications that we did not count on, and that, that was an extra $40,000 that it cost us just to extract dirt, repack it, and get, get that ready. So that's the thing that happens in construction. You just don't know until you get into it what's going to happen. But, and I mentioned to Dr. Burwell the other day, the other unknown that we have as we go through this is, of course, we've got one storm that just came through Texas. We've got another one that's getting ready to come through, through Florida. And what's happening is there's, there's a big push of all of these, a lot of these subs are saying, look, I can make more money going to these other states now, and I can be there for a while. But what that's doing is the one that's staying is sloppy driving up our build costs because the labor's going a little bit hard. So we don't know what that impact's going to be yet. And I've got to work with John on that to see what the impact's going to be. And I've had a brief discussion with Bill Cox about it. Texas was bad enough, but now we got two that's hit us. That may be a challenge. So that I don't know. Those are unknowns that I don't know yet that's going to be implanted here. But we weren't aware that on the meter change, as the city of Scottsdale was going to charge us the extra $29,000 just to set new meters in. That was an unknown.
Board Member Kirby. Okay, so let's just stick on this and use it as the example to make sure I understand the process.
Okay.
So this is total budget, 7847433. You see that on the column?
Yes, yes.
So, no, can you go back to the first page, the high level? Because that, if I'm understanding you correctly, that number should tie to...
It actually doesn't. That's a very good point. What happens is athletic budgets for all athletic events, or all athletic fields or physical education, is $15.5 million. When I spend, including the encumbrances, the balance will be $7.6 million. This page here is the big picture tied to the voter pamphlet. This page, the last page, is each individual project.
Okay, so I think you answered my question. Let me, let me say back to you. So the 15572 on this example was, is the budget that was set at the very beginning, and it's not going to change for the next six years.
No, and the only exception to that is in bonds, you can overspend a category by 10% and that is legal.
But would that would change that number? It would change the supporting pages, right?
No, I'm saying that you could overspend this by 1.5 million and still be legal. It's not what we want.
I understand. It's not what I'm asking. Line three, all the way across, those numbers will never change because that was our budget at the very beginning.
That's right.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
That adds up to $229 million if we put the voters up first.
Thank you.
That's your 229. That says we won't raise taxes if we stick to that.
Right.
Any other questions?
Board Member Hartman.
So Laura, since we spent a little bit of time with this, I can share maybe a couple of the other things that we talked about that will be reflected on Tuesday as well. So what we also talked about is that, you know, back to that $229 million that will never change, behind each one of those categories, which is each piece of the pie, is actually going to go back to a spreadsheet that we may only have three schools in progress or two schools in progress now, but we'll put school three, four, five, and six in estimate in there. So it ties to that number. Recognizing that estimates may change, but we know what we have left, right?
The other thing we talked about on that page is that at the bottom of each school, we'll have a target start date, a target end date, because we know that information in a red, yellow, green, on target, not on target, off target. So we can look at on budget, on time, in just two sheets for everything. And then the other thing we looked at on the front page is we're thinking about, or actually on that detailed page as well, is the square footage. So we can see what the actual cost per square foot is on the things that we've built to date. So that we know over time, either we're, I mean, it'll get, it'll be an interesting conversation, right? Because as Lewis just said, cost could go up, so that per square foot could go up. If that wasn't true, cost could go down, which is what we would expect because there's economies of scale. But it'll be offset by other things. So that will also give us a feel for, are we on target? Are we not on target? Are we improving? Are we not? Just what is it? Because by the time we get to school four, five, six, seven, we just didn't want to be in a place where all of a sudden there's a surprise. So I swear we know as soon as possible.
So thank you, Board Member Hartman. So, so there will be another line item that we describe as a monthly variance, plus or minus, either we're up or we're down because it'll change. Our objective is to stabilize in budget, but you know, sometimes you have uncertain circumstances that affect that. But the objective is to still build the number of schools that we're committed to within that allotted budget of the 220, uh, 119, but number, 119.
20.
Yeah. So on this one, on the one that you saw a few minutes ago, that those three numbers broken out, we, we had a single budget for the three fields for 7.5. Well, we had quarter break that out by field so I could manage that budget by each field. And we had invoices for each field, and we have audit trails for every field. No, no invoices are approved unless there's a physical view and a walkthrough of every project that we look for, and then we approve. I've got invoices sitting here, but they won't be approved until we do a physical walkthrough to verify that they're done. But to, to your point, Board Member Hartman, there will be a variance line on a monthly basis that you'll see, and it'll just be an easy, easy view. So we wanted to create something that on a monthly basis, we would just do an update. And we'll show you what the expenses are, what the encumbrances are, compared back to what the original budget is. So it gives you a quick view as a board.
Consistent for, that's good.
All right, and just so that I can give you a brief update on the override, we have about $9.6 million in the capital override. And year-to-date, we've spent 3.3, of which $175 billion was on technology and another, I mean, 7, 1.7 million and 788,000 is gone towards curriculum and instructional materials. So we're kind of holding back on the rest. We have a process. We go through, through cabinet on that so that we can make sure that's kept correct.
Okay, so we promised the voters that we would have a committee that we'd get together. That committee has now been established. This committee will also see these spreadsheets. They will have the conversations about here's what the voters pamphlet said we would do. The job is called a bond oversight committee. That means that they are to assure the community that we are staying within the budget that we said we would do. And it's not required under the law, but it's something that we want to do to mention that we're communicating. We, in the selection, had people that signed up. We also went out and tried to recruit some folks from learning communities where we had nobody sign up. So that every learning community has a representative on this committee. And then we have an administrator who serves on it. We have a board member, thank you, Ms. Kirby, for volunteering to do that. They will also go over this spreadsheet. They make twice a year, potentially a third time if a lot of new projects are moving forward. But they will be seeing the projects coming in, what categories they come into, in what order that they move forward. It is not a decision-making committee. It is an oversight to assure the voters that we're staying within what we told you, the voters, we would do, and stay within the percentages and what the law dictates that we do. So we appreciate those who volunteered. We have two community members at large, along with our learning community folks, so that we try to be inclusive in that process. And they have their meeting coming up this month, I believe. The first meeting has already been scheduled. So the emails, the confirmations, the folks will be meeting, and they will go over this in detail. So we have that level as well that's occurring. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you. No additional questions? All right, we will move on to information discussion, item 3C, professional development calendar discussion for 2018, '19, by '19, '20, '20, '21 school years. And that's Dr. Schiff. Yeah, I brought copies of the calendars in case they were sent, but Laura passed on it. I needed a copy calendar.
We're in the evening time already. You, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Burwell and Sandra. I thought I was done talking about calendars. So you remember that all three calendars, these three years, came to the board last May. And then my friend, Dr. Nance, we added some professional development dates. So we need to relook at them again. I did write a little bit of the history in there of the survey that occurred in the fall, last fall. So a year ago, we sent a survey out, and we had just under 4,000 surveys that were returned to take a look at what was most important, so what was most important to our parents, to the employees. And then we worked with the high school advisory group. So we went and met with them, and they gave us some input into what was most important also. So we kind of gave them things to pick from, and they ranked order of what was most important to each of the different groups, that data. And that's kind of what we based the template on that we brought to you last year. So we, in the template, we kind of set priorities to look at. So the instructional days prior to testing came up, our high school exams prior to winter break, the week at fall break. We don't do graduation on Fridays, ending Memorial Day also prior to it. One thing that you'll remember came up was we had over 120 responses about needing to make that Thanksgiving time longer, is what people would have liked to see. So occasionally in these calendars, you'll see the Wednesday off, and occasionally it's not. It just depends on how the days fell to whether or not we were able to do that. So each of the calendars that are proposed, we keep in mind kind of what we said was most of the typical priorities. We take a look at the three additional professional development days and where they fall. And we've had conversations about, it's not best to put all those days up front, that we want to see them spread out. So those days are spread out in these three proposed calendar. For '18, '19, we were able, if we were to have the high school exams before winter break, we keep the week of fall break. Memorial Day is early this year. It's on May 23rd, which means the start date is August 2nd. For '19, '20, Memorial Day is even earlier this year, on May 21st. We put the start date at August 1st. This year, we could do the Wednesday off prior to Thanksgiving, and keeping in mind that we have our final exam before winter break and fall break. And in 2021, Memorial Day's a little bit later, May 27th, so that makes the start date of August 6th, with the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, along with fall break and winter break. What we did do with the professional development days on the calendar as a pattern is, you'll see that at the Monday, these are all full days, the Monday following fall break, so students would have that Monday off, but staff would have a full day to come back for professional development, the Monday following winter break, and then the Friday following graduation. So that's the pattern of where those three days are placed within the three years. Discussion. Dr. Nance, you can jump in if you have professional development questions.
Also, sorry, sorry, I was just looking at some dates. Board Member Becker. You know, I'll just be honest, when I first saw it, it just hit me wrong because I just can't fathom starting school any earlier. And I know that is just my, is what I know and what my experience has been, and what my experience as a parent has been. Yet I know how hard it is to fit everything in when we have holiday, federal holidays, and we've got the fall break. So I don't know if, how other people feel about it. The only thing I thought of, because I, I get it, I mean, I understand the logic. I understand that, you know, you went out and you got a survey, and it said people, you know, wanted to end before Memorial Day. But what those, when, if I was taking that survey, what I didn't know is that it was a... But what those, if I was taking that survey, what I didn't know is that it was early Memorial Day and that meant it would make me start at August 2nd. So if I was asked, if I'm starting August 1st, do I want to end before Memorial Day? I probably personally would have checked no. I'd rather go after Memorial Day. And we didn't ask that question. So I just, I don't know that I have a solution for you other than my initial response is I just don't think we should start it earlier and I do, and this may not have any validity, the cost, but you always hear about it. You read it in the paper every year when Arizona starts earlier. How much more expensive is it really to go an extra week in August versus an extra week in May? I don't know that we have that number or if it actually makes a difference really many way of the cost, but I'm just throwing it out. Board Member Kravitz.
I followed picking back on what you said. The question was asked about starting later, but my first note when I looked at this was we didn't ask about starting earlier. Because I too have a visceral reaction to starting August 2nd. I'm like, could we, I have something like, and it's a mental thing, I get it, but when we're not, can we at least start when there's a two-digit date? And we asked about ending before Memorial Day and looking at the numbers, that didn't seem like it was a high priority if I'm understanding the numbers. It got a three from students, a five from parents, and a four from employees. Is it correct that number one was the most important thing?
Yes. So for students, winter break, getting exams.
Yeah, right.
You write that back up.
So to me, if we ended school before, or excuse me, after Memorial Day, it doesn't appear from reading, understanding this correctly, that the community.
For students, it was in the top three, but you're right, for employees, it was four and parents, five.
Parents, it was five.
Mm-hmm.
So it seems like that wouldn't be too much of a deal breaker, I guess, is what I want to say. And then, did we, had another, let's see, we've taken into account the AIA schedule because I know that always, that I used to hear, well, that's what's driving our calendar, what's going on with the AIA and football season starting.
Well, they always have practice before we're back in session anyway.
But I guess the start when their games start.
Yeah.
What, you know, do we, is that something that we need to consider?
It does.
Okay, that's fine with me. I just wanted to put that out there.
Start in the summer anyway.
And then, so from what I'm hearing, we have some years where we have Wednesday off before Thanksgiving and some days where we don't. I think it would be beneficial to come up with a uniform policy, a uniform standard rather than this year, do we have it off, do we not have it off? I mean, there's going to be people that they're going out of town for Thanksgiving, they're taking that day off anyway. But I just think it might be beneficial to have some uniform policy about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you mean the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
So to always have it or never have it?
Yeah.
Board Member Kirby. Refresh my memory if you have this data. What was the response rate on this survey for those three categories? So for example, you know, we have probably, what, 44,000 parents, how many actually responded?
We had over 2,600 parents and 11, almost 1,200 employees that took.
That responded?
Yeah.
So the employees was pretty high, it's almost 100% or no, 30%?
No. Well, we sent it to all employees, so we have around 3,000.
Okay, so almost 30%.
So, yeah.
And the parents, you had?
2,600.
Out of 44,000.
Okay.
And then the students?
Well, we just went to the high school leaders from each campus.
Five.
There's 15 or 20 on the committee, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Board Member Hartman. So we're just stacking up questions, not really, we're just getting input. I don't want to change the subject if we're.
Okay. So my question was on professional development. So I remember it being important that teachers wanted to see it and it's from instructional support, it's better to actually stagger it throughout the year. So is the logic here then, so it extends the breaks, so there's a week break in October and then it's Monday, so really instead of five days, it's whatever that is, nine, 11 days, and then the same thing in the spring, is that right?
Winter break.
Winter break.
Yes. Fall break and winter break are extended the one day for students, but the teachers would come back.
And then what was the third then? I'm sorry.
It's after the last day school, the Friday after graduation.
Okay. So does that make sense? I mean, what's the logic behind that? I mean, it's a big difference, right, in terms, well, not necessarily a big difference, but what's the logic?
It's a difference for us. It's a calendar that many districts in the East Valley are huge. Some districts have two professional development days rather than one after break. Yeah, it extends the student day, the student vacation by a day in the fall break and the winter break, but the teachers, and we have to talk about staff, the teachers for sure would come back on those two days and then the day at the end of the year, and those would be full days of professional development.
And that seems to work well in the district.
To space it out throughout the year makes a lot more sense than trying to do it all in those days before school starts when everyone's interested in setting up their rooms and getting ready for a new school year.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just thinking, older model, we used to have these random Wednesdays. So we're getting rid of that, we're putting in.
No, I don't think there's, no one's talked about getting rid of the Wednesdays, but I do feel strongly that a full day of professional development is exponentially more valuable than an hour and a half on a Wednesday.
Okay. All right. So I think I'll jump on that. So keeping the half-day Wednesdays for now, obviously, but what I, so I count, you have three days in July for just new teachers, did I read that correctly?
Right. The new teachers always come back three days.
Three days.
Or returning teachers do.
So, and then returning teachers have now two, three, four, five, six full days.
Three of them are before school starts.
Right.
And then three of them are, two during the year and one's the very last day.
Okay.
So that's where the six are.
Right. And in the past, they had three full days, right, before school started, is that correct?
Yes.
So that, okay, so that's the change.
Yeah, so it took the three that were added this year, instead of putting them up front because we didn't want to adjust the student calendar at that point, they're now going to be the spread out.
I guess I'll just throw in the comment that beginning of August, yeah, August 1st, yikes. That's, gotta wrap your brain around that one. I've always understood and shared with parents who questioned it, timing is not just AIA but also our AZ merit.
So it's many instructional days.
And the amount of time before AZ merit. I'm not sure if that argument holds up when you're talking about a week at the beginning and a week at the end necessarily.
It's a two-day difference is what we're talking about for students.
Unless we started a whole week later and you did the double digits.
Correct. That would make a difference in terms of preparation for test insurance.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, if I recall correctly, in the past, we were told that the initial committee had kind of established this, I think it was like 10 years they went out, talked about a double-digit start. And I think year by year, we've kind of always gone little, you know, first was nine, then it was the seventh, that type of thing, and we're pushing it to the first.
Yeah, so we can take it past Memorial Day, that's just a shift. And then it would, because if you look at the calendar, you have 28, 29, and 30, because we don't want, graduate on Fridays, and they don't hold graduation ceremonies on Fridays. So we have three days if we want to bump it into that next week. But you're taking it after Memorial Day.
Okay. Board Member Kravitz?
What's the objection to having graduation on Friday?
Dr. Burwell?
Congratulations on Friday. I think there's.
Well, traditionally, in many districts, because of respect for the Jewish population.
Oh, I should know that. I wasn't thinking with that hat, I was thinking.
School board hat.
I did the same thing, standing.
So I can mark up three different ones with different.
Can we flip a coin? Is that terrible?
No. Board Member Kirby.
Do we have any data, attendance data, have we ever started this early before August 1st?
We're not the earliest.
I don't, not other districts.
Scottsdale.
I don't know about Scottsdale and I know that there are districts across the state that have the constant debate about the elementary schedule, which is those that start in July have done.
That's a whole other issue.
But so, you know, I guess the question for me is, so I'm going to put my second day hat on, I'm not going to be a superintendent for a moment, and maybe Dr. Johnson can join me, this could be a high school principal for a moment. So the question that I think about is, after Memorial Day would be basically examinations at the high school. Is that good or bad? Personally, I don't think that's a problem. I think that there are students that would probably use that time to get prepped for those examinations. But if, but don't think that the week after Memorial would be teaching, it's testing, at least in the secondary world. I don't know what the elementary level, but to me, it would be all testing days. You're coming back to testing the whole time and probably mental level would feel the same thing, given that we live and die on semester-end examinations that have to be given and are critical. So to me, as a secondary, it's not an issue if we went after Memorial Day. I don't know, Dr. Johnson might have a different.
I concur. I concur, same thing, nobody's doing tests.
It's not such a long break that it's going to make a difference academically, because some kids might be in a mental.
Good benefit.
I think that fits some. I don't know on the elementary level if Dr. Danz has an opinion about after Memorial Day, what that looks like.
They will teach up to the last.
They do. Those elementary folks are so, no little. That's what we don't, we don't want as a non-instructional time. So I think if, it wouldn't harm us to, I got to tell you, it's a little bit choking to think of August 1st as, so to take those exams and put them after Memorial Day, I don't, I'm trying to look up here, end prior to Memorial Day was not a huge priority, right?
And of course, the kids think so, don't they?
No, theirs wasn't even that bad.
But it's.
Their biggest issue was that exam prior to winter break. So if you push it back on the end, you off-balance your semester still giving the exam prior. I've seen districts that do that, they still give the exams prior to winter break. This semester is slightly shorter than this semester, but it balances out with state examinations anyway.
Yeah.
So it's not been that big a deal. I think we could still honor the, what the students want is, hey, give me my high school exams before I go into winter break. I want, I want to totally shut down on winter break and still go behind Memorial and be okay. So we could shift that by a week.
I, yeah.
I think we'd be all right with that is what.
I just went back on my, because I saved everything.
In 2006, my gosh.
We started, it was proposed, I don't know, I remember if we started that way, August 21st.
Wow.
And we ended on June 6th.
Oh, wow. Is that before we got fall break? Was that before fall?
That has to be.
Fall break for us.
No, fall break is there.
How many kids?
I'm counting as I go through this.
Yeah. I, I think the one week. It still honors the idea of AZ merit and AIA and understands that we can't push into September, it's just not possible. So a few days here in August, a few days there, it's not, not a huge deal one way or the other, but going farther and farther away from the double-digit start is hard to swallow. I, my students, my kid, my student would just say, yeah, let me study through Memorial Weekend. But I know we'll have some families who disagree with that.
You're going to have people on all sides.
You sure are. You sure are.
Yes. Board Member Becker. Something I just thought of too, though, even though some of the private schools are moving up theirs a week, but it's like the third week now, it's in the fourth week, I don't know if we have a demographic that would leave because we're starting August 1st too, and they would then transfer to schools that are starting later.
There's no doubt, we don't have the data, but to your question, Mrs. Becker, about would some families possibly choose someplace else because we're starting them so early? I think a bigger issue is would some of our families choose to come back later?
Well, that's.
And I think that that is a reality.
That is a reality.
Earlier that we go into August, the more the likelihood that we have high absenteeism in the first week of school. So I think that one week, I wouldn't want to do two or three weeks because then we're pushing more on top of the teachers before assessments.
Right.
But I think the one week I certainly could live with.
And just a caution too, don't have just one day after Memorial Day. Have enough days to make it worthwhile people coming back.
I would agree with that 100%. I want to save, I have vague memories of that happening in this district years ago.
I agree.
Where you did, I mean, come on, that was brutal. So if we're talking about three days.
Yeah, I want the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So then what it does is move down that August start at least three days. I think that's reasonable. I don't know about a full week, I mean, because that really messes us up, but I think our three-day movement.
The third-year calendar, do you, because if I was looking at a pattern, are we looking at going to the third-year calendar of moving this even later and still going with Memorial Day being the 27th? So we're not going after Memorial Day that third year or not leaving where it's at in 27 because Memorial Day is so late?
But that's also, that's the August 1st start date, right?
So this is the August 6th.
That's the week.
So that's in 2021.
Oh, okay.
So we start August 6th, but if we come back after Memorial Day, you are in June. So I'm just getting direction, clarifying on the directions of is it going into June because we want all to go past it further or because it's later we get it on August 6th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, so the Memorial Day is May 31st.
Yes. So if I take any past, we're in June.
Third year, we're there. So the third year, third year, you need the same, the other two, you adjust it according to the question. And then Dr. Johnson, did you have a couple points?
Just a couple of points when you're thinking about looking at, starting at a week later than the proposed August 1st, gives us also an extra week to get teachers. So, and when we back up when our new teachers start, which is about 10 days, we can have the four students, so they're coming about the middle of July to start, so it gives us a little more time with that. And then the other piece is when you were talking about aligning the calendars with surrounding, when we have families move in to Scottsdale from other states, we're an unusual state that starts very early and with early high school credit, we run into the requirement of if you're here past, if schools beyond the 10 days of the start, you can't earn credit. Now, they can, but that's already 10% allowed for absences. So if we start August 1st and people are used to west, east, saw, east states, eastern states that don't start even on Labor Day, but at least if we don't, if we started a week later, they'll be better able to accommodate, get earning credit and then.
Making that up. And I would say, I understand what you're saying about the 2021, but maybe we should reflect on, or Board Member Kravitz, this point of consistency. We always or never have the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, we always go or we never go after Memorial Day. Are, is a concern there or is it all right to, a couple of years, we go after Memorial Day and the year we don't?
I'm not sure you want to take it into June.
Maybe the theory is we don't go into June.
Yeah.
Not about Memorial, but we don't go into June.
Fair.
But what's wrong with going into June?
If the, if the date is of that week.
Summer school is a piece.
Summer school.
Summer school, teachers, master's programs, academic, so there are, June and July are heavily, and both teacher training and student training, I have to teach it from the college perspective because they've been out for a little while.
And they start June 1st. At age 2, they start June 1st.
Oh, master's programs start first week of June in most of our colleges.
So clear direction, three days, these first two years.
Got you everything you need?
Yep. Those three days, okay. All right. All right. Excellent. Wasn't so painful, was it? All right, we move on to information discussion items B and D, discussion of governing board policy manual, adoption of GCL, professional workdays, and GBK, grievance and revision of GCC absences.
Dr. Shittman and our attorney, Ms. Martin.
Can you hear me? My belt. Good afternoon, governing board, Dr. Bergholz. We have for you the results of our meeting with what we're calling the Policy Development Group. We had a little bit of discussion about this. Pam and I met with this group, which is represented, represents certified, classified, and admin staff. It was about 10, eight or 10 of us?
About 10.
And we had discussion of some of our policies, and we wanted to bring these to you for a first read. I'll give you a little overview of how things went. I think the order we have them on the agenda are, start with GCL, which is professional staff schedules and calendars. And Pam, feel free to jump in if you think I'm leaving out an important part of our discussion. So as I mentioned, we have the Policy Development Group. We had two meetings with the group, August 24th and August 31st, and we had a good discussion about policies. We talked to you a little bit before about the difference between policies and regulations. For our audience, I'll just remind you a little bit about that discussion. Policies generally are more for the higher level, what is the philosophy behind what we're trying to do. Regulations and eventually probably an employee handbook will be more for implementation of the policy procedures, where to go with your issue. So we started with professional staff schedules and calendars, which the Arizona School Boards Association has as model, GCL. We looked at the ASBA model, we looked at a couple other districts, including Chandler and Paradise Valley. And for some of the discussion, we also looked at the expired teacher employment agreement to look at what that language was. So for GCL, this is a policy that we do not currently have. The blue here is the ASBA model language. The group had a good discussion about this policy. The main changes that we are recommending on this first read are that we add superintendents designate, which is a reflection of a discussion we had about, is it really the superintendent or is it more often for teachers to principal, who's kind of having that discussion with the teacher about what's the schedule going to look like, what's happening on our campus? So we thought it was important to include that ability for a principal to have that discussion. And then we had some discussion about the sentence in the middle you'll see here, which says, employees will be present and available for an eight-hour contract day, which will be determined by the student hours at each school. Some of our sister districts have this language. There was some discussion, it wasn't 100% consensus of the group as to whether we should have this language. The teachers in particular did have some concerns about whether this represented request for them to spend more time on campus than they're currently required. There was discussion of the expired TPA language, which says 15 minutes before and 15 minutes after, and whether an eight-hour contract day represents expecting them to be on campus for more hours than they currently are. At the same time, the teachers did talk about how they, a lot of them currently do way more than, than that. And so recognizing that that discussion was there, Dr. Nance was also a good part of that discussion, and I think if you wanted to chime in too, Dr. Nance, about the eight-hour contract day. But in the end, we came to you with this recommendation because we felt like this would be more workable for our schools. So Pam, did you want to add anything about that language?
I think part of the conversation was about being on campus more, would they be compensated more for that? So I want to make sure that that was part of the conversation that happened, that now they do 15 minutes before, 15 minutes after, and if they were to be expected there for the eight hours, would they be compensated for it? The committee also talked about our classified employees are actually, they're eight and a half hours because they have an unpaid lunch. So their workday is eight and a half hours, which they are unpaid for 30 minutes of lunch during that time. I thought that, I think that part of the conversation for the group was that it would be helpful to have it identified so that we all know what to expect versus not putting any time in there. So there was kind of conversation on both sides of some believing we should have something so that it's clear, it's identifiable, everyone knows what the expectation is.
And again, this is the first read. We wanted to meet with the group in advance of having the board look at this language, and then we want to go back with whatever feedback you might have on all of these policies to have further discussion before we bring you the second read and hopefully final approval of any of the policies. So are there any questions, concerns, comments about this one?
So I appreciate the added clarity in it, I think that's a helpful thing. My question is really more around kind of the process, who's been involved and how it'll be vetted. So all I've heard so far is there were eight people on the committee. So exactly who are those? Are they, we're going to extend it out to a larger group? What does that whole vetting process look like?
Yeah, we have four teachers, certified teachers on the committee, we have two classified, we have two principals, then we have two that are district level, more support exempt type of employees, and then Dr. Nance is also on it. So that's the group. They were coming together, we asked for volunteers, so that communication went out, I don't know when Dr. Bergholz, it went out through communication, saying, anyone interested in doing policy work? To go ahead and give us the names. I probably had about 20 people that put in, that wanted to do it. I reached out to the association presidents to get their feedback on a portion of who represented certified, classified administrators, so they gave feedback on, okay, here's who said they wanted to do it, but tell me who you would want to represent you on the working group. We said we were going to do four policies with them, and then I'm going to change out a group for the spring, we're going to look at four additional policies, but bring in different people to get different lenses on the next group of policies.
So is that it? Is there a process where it goes back to either, you know, a representative from each campus or any type of?
We'll do communication out once it's decided out. But again, we've been clear with the group that the policies, work of the boards to come up with the policy. You'll see that we have been working on some handbook language to go with it, and we're getting some feedback from the group on that too. But the communication will loop out more, but not necessarily getting the feedback. They're there to represent their.
The governing board may, may remember that policy is the responsibility of the board. It's your governance. But the best way to develop a policy is to begin with the attorney to review law, and then in the, after reviewing law, to talk to the practitioner. Because we want to look at how practice is implementing this. And then the policy is the bridge. The policy shares with us how to implement law and make sure that it can be done by the practitioner. So the reason that we bring in a sampling of practitioners is to converse with them about how will we handle that? So policy is based in law, and then it goes into the practice, back to you with input for the policy to say, this is what we can live by. If you send this out to 3,000 employees, you're going to get a bunch of responses.
Just to be, I guess to be clear then, I understand the role of policy. My specific question is around that practitioner process, and I'm looking to you because I, input is important from a practitioner, not 3,000, but if we have 30, 30, just because it's representative of each campus, or 60, because there's two from each campus, or, you know, I don't know what that right number is. It just seems awfully small to me for 8,000 people, when we have 30.
3,000 employees, not 8,000.
Oh, 3,000.
But that said, they, they represent, it is our expectation that those that signed up that represent the SEA, talked back to the SEA folks. It's our expectation that the teachers at large, that represented teachers at large, have talked to colleagues as well, that administrators have talked to administrators, that those folks that are on their survey have had conversations with those that they represent, that they, they are an individual that represents the people that they, the roles that they have. So you have four teachers on there, and that was critical for us to have that piece. Now, one can say the next process, we certainly can expand that. There is also the theory that if you get beyond 15, you can't make decisions, you can't make recommendations. So there is that, that sweet point that says, how big is too big? Well, 20 people in a room, 30 people in a room will not have consensus. So the, the sweet number is somewhere between 10 and 15. Above 15, you're going to struggle a little bit with the management of it. So we had 10.
11.
11 people. So we'll try to get that up a little bit higher on the next go-around, but to your point, the sweet spot is probably 15. Everything I've read on that is, when you get above 20 and 30, you can't, you can't get consensus. And we tried to really work, strive for some type of consensus, but we heard there was not consensus here. There was input. And, and probably what you liked about the clarity that defines was also not resonating well with people who don't want clarity. So there's that too. So I do suspect that we will hear back on an eight-hour day, to the point of Dr. Sit's point of saying, well, look, if I'm working an eight-hour day, I'm working more and I want to be paid more. In the general rule of thumb, a 40-hour week, a 1.0 position is an eight-hour position that works 40 hours a week. We know the teaching profession isn't a clean 40 hours a week, mine isn't a 40 hours a week. We know that teachers are at home working, they're working on grades, et cetera. We need a policy that, that doesn't necess, says, hey, this is an eight-hour day. Now, there are times that you, you need to work with your supervisor that says, I have really got to get my kid to the dentist, or I've got to get the dog to the bed, or et cetera, life happens. The expectation is that that evening, that individual is picking up those hours and taking care of business, and that's just a professional respect in the, in our field. But I think that the general public would say, I kind of thought teachers worked an eight-hour day, and that they're contracted for an eight-hour day. So the expectation that says, well, we're going to pay you more because we've said you have an eight-hour day, let us not mistake the fact that we're not going to be paying more for this. There is already an expectation that teachers work an eight-hour day, it's just it's had flexible scheduling with it. But eight hours is kind of the expectation of what a 1.0 contract is.
Board member Beckham.
I'd like to piggyback on that and say something that may not be really viewed upon by some as the right thing that they want to hear. But there was a problem with the language in the TA, TPA. And I can remember 10 years ago when my kids were, when I got responses from teachers, I looked up in the TPA, and when I read, it was 15 minutes before and 15 minutes after, and I asked the teacher, and I was surprised to learn that they didn't expect to work an eight-hour day because of that language. So I believe that the clarity of that language is very important, and it's because we have a problem that we're trying to solve. And I think it's okay that we do that. There's nothing, nothing wrong with that, especially because we know that they are, teachers are professionals, and there is some flexibility, like there's with everybody, to come to your supervisor, and if you have something going on. I don't know that we've had, I haven't heard that that has become an issue, that we're not giving our professionals and our employees, we're not able to give them their wishes if it's a legitimate reason.
You're absolutely right, Ms. Beckham.
I don't think that there's any, I'm just, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting the clarity of an eight-hour day into a policy.
Thank you. There hasn't been, I've never received a complaint that somebody has denied me the ability, the flexibility to take care of lives, issues that occur, seek child home, et cetera. From what I understand, most administrators have been very flexible with that. On the flip side of that, however, when a building-level principal has tried to have a meeting, I have heard the other side of, I don't have to be here, or this, I've exceeded my 15 hours. That's the part I think we're trying to resolve here by saying this. And so I, I think that that helps clarify that, yes, that you can schedule an IEP or a 504, or, and that's not to say that, I'm pleased, again, to the public, I'm not blanketing all teachers with that, that piece, I'm just saying, I have never heard a teacher complain to me that a principal has not allowed for flexibility for teachers to handle other things during that time. There is a sign-out, sign-in process, because if something happened and I locked the campus down, I need to know where people are. So that's important to follow those procedures.
And if I may add, I think to Ms. Hartman's broader point about the process and feedback, what we used to do a few years ago in updating policies is we would get our new advisories from ASBA, and I would send them out to the departments that, that it affected and ask for their feedback. How does this work for you in the real world? Here's what we have to do under the law, this is governing board's policy. But we would do that feedback. So this is actually, having this group, this representative group, given that it's the personnel policies, I think is, is very similar to that same process that we used to do when we would regularly get the policies updated. So, and I think we had a really good, robust discussion, and we took really good notes because we didn't want to misreport any of the feedback that we got from people. So it seemed to work really well, in my opinion.
I appreciate that. That's. Board member Kirby.
Okay, so as I read through this policy, I think back to when I was a parent on campus. And I'm, it happens at all levels, that elementaries would come to me first. Teachers are staying late for art walks and music performances. And so part of, part of the professional world is, why does that light always go out when I talk?
It's without a sign.
Part of the professional world is that the principal maintains a level of professionalism as well. So if all the teachers are staying until 7 o'clock on a Tuesday night for an artwork, art walk, then Friday, Thursday and Friday may be head-on right after school. If you don't have any parent meetings, you have no commitments, head-on home, right? Because that, that's the beauty of a professional. But part of this falls on our principals as well.
Yes.
If I can go back to the language, it's gone.
I'm just keeping the light on.
No, it's fine. Off the screen, the language fell up or fell off. I have it there. Okay. Can you, well, I'm glad we are clarifying that this eight-hour day is as flexible and needs to be as flexible as it's always been for teachers, because, yes, not, not just life happens, but things on your campus happen that is part of that eight-hour day too. So I think it is important that we, I like that, that, you know, it's not like this world is changing all of a sudden, and, and they're going to be expected to do all these different things in that eight-hour, and, and then on top of it, they have to do the other things they've been doing. So it's not that, obviously. What, what I'm a little confused on, it doesn't have clarity for me, is which will be determined by the student hours at each school? What exactly does that mean? Does that mean when you have an art walk that night? Is, is that? It's very confusing.
Yeah, I think that language just reflects the different hours.
Two hours in each school, so just your, just your start time. So it's, so it's not addressing at all, depending on when students are either.
It's really that last sentence of the first paragraph that addresses that, the superintendent or designate may alter the, or extend the school day based on special events, meetings, activities. That's really the part that talks more about.
So that which will be determined by student hours at school is purely just your start? Okay, easy. All right. Any additional questions?
Okay, we will bring this back for a second read.
Just this language?
Yeah, yes.
Which I'm agreeing to?
Yes.
Okay, board member Kirby.
So back to the process, this then, since we have not changed anything, this wouldn't go back to the committee since it just came straight to us, or the working group, whatever you call it, since it came to us and it was just.
Is there a meeting scheduled to see that before the second read?
Yes.
We wanted to report back to them.
We scheduled them another meeting to work on one more policy and to report back forward.
But there shouldn't be additional changes, given, at least on this one, given the discussion that you just had. Okay. If there's nothing else on that one, then we'll go to the next one. Which is staff grievances, policy GBK. Scottsdale does not currently have this policy. And again, we had a really good discussion about this with the policy development group. The group raised concerns about making sure that we ensure that our employees have due process and know what that looks like, and know where to go with complaints, and how to complain, and what kinds of things they could grieve. Again, we kind of went back to that discussion of, this is the broader philosophical, you know, we want to resolve things as quickly as possible so people can get back to what they, you know, need to be doing, and at the lowest level possible. And then finally, the superintendent establishing a procedure. And we talked about that due process, and who do you go to with a complaint, and what can you grieve, being a discussion for regulations and handbooks. And again, we looked at the expired TDA language when we had this discussion. But really, the group landed on this language pretty quickly and easily once we got to the agreement that, of course, we want to make sure that our employees know what to do in terms of complaints, and that we are going to include that in regulation and handbook language. So the consensus really was, you know, everybody agreed, let's get it done early and at the lowest level possible, and then work on procedures in a separate document. I know there was some, some interest in, you know, we looked at Chandler, among other policies, and Chandler specifically, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't email that one, but Chandler specifically had the, this grievance policy where if the grievance is based on a civil rights issue or compensation, that it's the board that makes the final decision, excuse me. So we did kind of talk about that in the group. Again, with that philosophy of getting things done as quickly as possible, not having to wait for a board meeting, and at the lowest level possible. We did have general consensus, I think, that we didn't want to recommend that language. But of course, you know, we did discuss, how does the board know when we have an issue that is affecting someone's civil rights or compensation? And we talked about, you know, the fact that if it's a legal issue that Dr. Birdwell and I are reporting to the board on what matters we have that are rising to that level or might rise to that level. So I know there was some interest in that language, maybe among board members, so I don't know if you want to talk about that, if you'd like me to, I can find the policy and, or Chandler, pull that up.
Board Member Beckham, can, can you answer your question? How would we find out about civil rights issue or legal issue?
The discussion that I had with the group at the time was that Dr. Birdwell and I report those issues to the board when they come up. Occasionally, we'll have an office of civil rights issue. I will share that with Dr. Birdwell, and we'll report that to the board in a attorney-client privileged communication as to, here's what the case is, and here's what the legal issues are, and if the board is interested, no, if the board's interested, sorry, that was a bad choice of words, if the board needs legal advice, executive session, we'll, we'll plan for that as well.
Is that what we do now?
Sorry?
Is that the same procedure we use right now?
Yes.
It's not a policy, it's just a procedure.
It is a procedure, yes.
So that would not actually be changing?
Right, that would not change.
Would it actually be written down as a procedure?
Well, you certainly could.
I mean, I don't know, is it written?
Yeah, I would, I would highly suggest that, in clarity, that if that's what we're doing, we should put it in procedural language. The other, the other piece that we might want to do in a policy like this is to actually add a little bit of language that says, the superintendent has the option to bring any grievance to the government board that they deem appropriate. Now, the reason for that is that if, if you feel like the case might, if I felt like, Michelle and I get talking, we say, you know, this is not going to get resolved at the lowest level. We need to make sure beyond due process has occurred. Is the best case, you have legal argument, Michelle correct me anytime you want, but a great legal argument is that I went above and beyond, that we gave every opportunity for this case to be heard and resolved. So we tried to resolve it here, we heard it at the next level, and the superintendent deemed it to come to the government board because we feel it needs another level of due process. And sometimes the board and the superintendent don't always agree on these issues for a variety of reasons. Remember that you represent the community, and you're not wearing that administrative hat. And so sometimes you have a different perspective, where you bring your experience from the workforce to this issue, and you might have a, a way to resolve it before it gets too illegal. So is that, I don't know what that, let me.
This is Chandler's, and it's, sorry.
That's okay.
It's not a touchscreen. It says such procedure shall, the procedure that the superintendent implements for grievances shall provide for board review of any grievance pertaining to the grievance's compensation or allegations of civil rights violation.
But sometimes it's not limited to just civil rights.
Right, that's what I'm.
And so, so to me, I would want the broader ability that, that a, you know, that a grievance, the superintendent still has a judgment to bring a grievance to the governing board as a deemed, I don't, I don't know the appropriate language, I don't know if you figured that part out, but, but I think we might want some option to that. Because sometimes we have insight into a case a little deeper than necessarily grievance procedure is aligned, and we're saying, you know, we better, we better have more due process, gather more facts, allow more opportunity than what we have in our current system. Most things get resolved at a lower level. But occasionally, you have one that you really do need to bring all the way through the process.
And I would think that if I was on the other side, the person who is wanting to make a grievance, that that would be important to that group, and I want to honor what that group wants in that type of agreement.
And, you know, we try to write a policy that doesn't just, when I'm gone and you're gone, that it's a policy that endures and allows for appropriate governance, and sends a message to the employees that we are going to hear your concerns and take it into the deepest consideration. And so that, that's why I throw that out there, and, and I don't know, I always look at it from, does it shore us up stronger legally? And have we given it enough due diligence? I mean, quite honestly, sometimes facts begin to emerge as we go through a case that weren't there when we started. And, and so we, we take a different consideration. And so that, and that happens all too many times, I think, that it, all of a sudden, different facts arise as we come up the chain.
Board Member Kirby.
So this, this handbook language that's in front of us applies to every employee, classified, certified, administrative, right?
Yes.
Wait, wait. Well, it's the same, okay, it's, it's the language behind the policy. So I jumped ahead. But my question's still valid. This policy then applies to all employees, correct?
Yes.
So it could very well be a direct report of the superintendent has a grievance against the superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or am I?
And there shall be no retaliation?
It could happen.
It could happen.
Absolutely.
It absolutely could.
You're right.
You're right. So, so how, so we have to allow, I don't know the legal language, and I, it just occurred to me, I don't know how we allow for that conversation to make it to the board. And maybe it is only those direct reports of the superintendents, all of them, go, those all go to the board.
Unless they're resolved.
Unless they're resolved, right? I don't, so that's just something.
Board Member Harley.
I have a comment related to that, because it was my, one of my questions. First of all, I have two things about this that I like. One, personally, I like when I think less is more when it comes to policy. And two, what I like about what this policy states philosophically is that it's at the lowest level. So we are actually providing authority and responsibility at the appropriate level. So I think that's a really, for me, that's an important message that we're saying to leadership at the site level. My question, related to what Board Member Kirby was saying, is do we need a policy around escalation? You described one situation.
That's the procedure, that's where I jumped.
So that's where my question is, and maybe that becomes part of, I don't know if it's policy or that piece is actually.
Could be procedural.
It's procedural. But typically, you see an escalation process, because what if the issue is with the supervisor? There needs to be, there needs, what if there's, you know, it's, and obviously, that would go all the way up to the superintendent. So how do we manage it? Or what if the outcome isn't agreeable? Is there an escalation process to take it to the next level? So is that all, are we going to see that separately?
Well, you have a draft of the handbook language.
Oh, I thought this was replacing it. So we actually.
No, no. So this, this handbook language draft is actually a three-step.
Right. So this is the recommendation for that.
For the government board policy.
This goes in your policy book, and then.
What you're looking at right now, by the way, is Chandler, not.
And I'm, I'm going to jump in here as we clarify that, because we are not being expected for to approve the procedures, the handbook.
Correct, that's right.
That is correct. There should be no expectation of that handbook coming back to us for approval.
We want to make sure that we communicated with you, but.
It is our policies that we are working on and approving.
Yes, so the handbook is the implementation of the policy. We want a policy that says we are going to hear grievance, and to your philosophical point, resolve them at the lowest level possible. Really important in a handbook, though, to say how we're going to do that. So the employee understands the expectations of what I'm going to be able to do with that. And, and we can resolve what I'm saying actually in the, in the handbook side of it. There are just some that should go to a governing board. Or if there is a perceived bias, sometimes this occurs, I perceive that the superintendent will be biased, it can come to a governing board, and the board can actually also assign, under our policies, a hearing officer. Because sometimes the board wants to remove itself until there's an employment decision. So they'll assign a hearing officer, an impartial hearing officer, to hear a case, and then the board is the decision-maker of the situation.
Is there, is there language already in our policy about employee hearings going to the governing board?
You know, it's funny, when we had this discussion, I thought that there was too, because it's been a long time since we had an issue get to that level. But when we did, my recollection was that the board really wanted to have an impartial hearing officer, and the board meeting we had was the board getting that recommendation, hiring a hearing officer to give the recommendations, and give a report to the board for the board to make a decision based on that. But it was not in the policy when I looked for it. So I had that recollection too, but it's not there.
There'd be another policy dismissing.
Right.
And that is the assignment of hearing officers.
Yeah. And I was going to say, both Board Member Kirby and Board Member Hartman's points are well taken, especially in the area of civil rights. We always train, if it's your supervisor, or if it's an issue you're not comfortable bringing to your supervisor, here's three other ways you can complain, not one of them. So that's a really good point, and we definitely want to make sure that we have that in, in our procedures, in our regulations, so that employees know what their options are. They're not comfortable bringing it to the immediate supervisor. That just is a reality. So I appreciate you bringing this up. Anything else on grievances?
Are we, are we going to talk about the handbook language?
I did not have that up.
I can talk.
Sure.
I have lots of feedback.
Lots of, okay.
I can just hand this to you.
Well, and I'm not sure if we gave enough clarity on the idea of putting, adding language into the grievance regarding the superintendent bringing certain cases to the board.
So what I heard is maybe we don't mimic the Chandler language, but something maybe broader, and whether that's in policy or regulation, to talk about a process for how we're going to report things to the board.
Are we going to take the procedural piece that would be in the handbook and make it a regulation?
Okay.
So if we do that and make it a regulation, because this is such a critical policy, we could put it in the regulation and take care of it there. One of the options that you have is, is that regulations are procedural guidelines. And in the procedural guidelines, we can also define if it is a civil rights issue, or we can kind of make sure that that language is there, that it can come to the board. And it would be my preference, when you have one of that legality, that the board play a role in. It shouldn't stop with the superintendent, in other words.
And again, regulations are not required to be approved by the board, but that doesn't mean we don't bring them to you and make sure that you're comfortable with what your regulations say, that are implementing your policies.
Okay. Board Member Kirby.
Okay, so on the handbook language.
Yes.
Did the working group develop this language as well? I brought the sample that's out of the administrator book right now, and we just talked about the philosophy of three steps. Seems reasonable. It will take it down in a much faster pace than if you had it to be four or five steps. But by policy, it really is the superintendent who determines the steps, and this has not gone through Dr. Birdwell yet. The group just started, it started looking at it. Okay, that makes sense that I. What I'm going to do is give you just my notes. Okay, perfect. I think they'll be pretty clear.
Board Member Beckham, did you have something else that you got clarified?
Okay. Okay, and the last policy we have for review today for you. Deals with the professional day.
Absences without leave.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you. GCC.
Attendance.
Policy GCC.
This is a policy that the district currently has. And this is what it looks like. That, this red line is kind of odd, but the, the part that's lined out in red is actually in our current policy. So we have the ASBA model plus this language in the middle here that has as one of the bases for deeming someone absent without leave, failure to obtain approval from the superintendent or the superintendent's designee for being absent for more than five consecutive days. Our discussion with the policy development group, we had, I think, 100% consensus that we really don't need this language. The recommendation was to delete that language and go with the, the ASBA model, except to add the superintendent or his or her designee, so that, again, we were recognizing that really the discussion at schools is with the principal or assistant principal, between them and teachers, or with the direct supervisor, or classified and other administrators. So. Pam, would you add anything to that?
Yeah, this was a fairly easy one, although you'll see that the handbook just had a lot of pieces. What about grievance? What about jury duty? What about this? So, you know, we just took a look at what was in state statute, what's required, and it just put a lot of that detail in the handbook about the different things. It does put the approval process on to the supervisor doing it. And so we talked a little bit about even not having a need for high priority days, that it would go to the supervisor for approval.
So no more hearings on high priority and whether or not you get to be excused or not excused? This would be, if my supervisor approved me to be gone on that day, I'm good to go. If they said, no, we don't have any substitutes, you can't be excused to go, end of conversation.
Correct.
If I then chose to take it, I'd take it without pay. That's more like the workforce.
Yes, yes, it is.
Board Member Kirby.
So I have a question on how principals would make that decision. Are they given a budget for substitutes? That they manage their budget all year long?
No, there's not individual budgets. Substitutes are all handled at the district.
So how is a principal going to make that decision?
No, my prior district, school got a designated amount of budget money per month, and when they ran out, they ran out. They didn't get any more.
See, and that's, and I, I gotta tell you.
Two priorities.
I think, I, I reserve the right to change my mind, but I think I really like the idea of getting rid of high priority days. If we really want to say that we're professionals, then let's act like professionals, all of us. So, but if we're going to do that, back to the conversation that principals have the authority to make these decisions, well, they have to have tools also. And so put yourself in the role of a principal. If you're not, if we're going to eliminate high. If you're not, if we're going to eliminate high priority days, then what, what do I need to manage when all the teachers say, I want to take off the day before Thanksgiving or whatever, right? I need to have a budget to manage. And, and the principal has to be held accountable to something.
So, two functional tools, however. I think one of them is, the question I have to ask is, that one that gives us our absences now, what is that?
A S O.
A S O, thank you. Does that come to the principal today? So when a person puts in their absenteeism, who approves whether a teacher is absent or not?
So, there is no approval to it. The principals see it, but they don't have to approve it. So I've been working with payroll and H R through A S O to actually say you could put days in and it would have to go to the principal first prior to approval. The system can do that.
So that's one tool. And, and the reason I say that is because I have to approve whoever it works for me now. They don't get to just take off. I get to go in and tell them, yes, you can have her, no, you can't. Second to that, is it possible to set up a budget to take our substitute budget and say, here's what we're going to deem as an appropriate monthly budget assigned to a school so a principal actually had authority over their substitute budget?
Yeah, it's possible.
So that, that is a second tool. And that's really important because as a principal, you sit down with your staff and you say, we've been given X amount of days. If we burn them all week one, we don't get substitutes. That means if you're absent, what happens is everybody gets your kids. And so they begin to self-manage. Now, in two prior districts, when we were trying to save dollars, we saved a lot of money in substitute budget because it was the control of the school. So a principal was able with their staff to come up with plans. It was horribly abused. I mean, absenteeism was high, substitute budgets were high. So that was one of our cost savings during the bad budget was to say, let's put together a substitute process. You had a budget, you had a plan. If we run through our budget in week one, if everybody decides the second Tuesday of the month, we're all going to Palm Springs to the outlets, well, guess what? We just, we have no substitute money left the rest of the month. So it really allowed us to get that under control. And I will tell you, in a district prior where we spent 1.7 million in substitutes, we dropped it down to a half a million dollars. It was that significant when the control went to the building level and that they were capped on that dollar.
So I guess the question is, without us trying to establish the process, is do we have a process in place that people are trained on that we can move forward with a policy like this right now?
We'd have to train them.
Well, this policy itself is eliminating blackout days.
This is the current policy we have already.
Right.
So it doesn't necessarily have to.
But it would not stop the practice.
Correct.
Of removing blackout days.
Correct.
And going to something more site-based. This language would allow that.
Right.
Correct. It is expired.
So it didn't exist anywhere else?
No.
We, we did communicate out to teachers that we were using them this year because we needed something in place to start. So we did communicate out that we were continuing the exact same process we had around high priorities with last year. Because we can't change it, but I think we have to get the process in place, get back out to principals and, and get it out and communicated.
And it's a step towards the future.
Right.
But it certainly would. The reason I ask the two of them is it could be done in the future to give the control back to the building. And I think, I think that's a really critical point and to your, I reserve the right to change my mind. I just want to say that I've seen it work both ways. And I will tell you that, that, again, it's saying, look, you're the professional, you decide whether or not you can have that person gone. And if you can't have them gone, have an open, honest conversation about it. Hey, we're testing this week and we need all hands on deck. Or it's finals week and nobody else can give your final and proctor that. You need to be here, so I'm not going to approve your leave. Or, hey, it's a once in a lifetime, I got my husband won a, I don't know, my husband and my wife won a, what do you call this cruise? And I need to be gone a day early. Well, then the building has to make a decision about that. One, can I get a substitute? Two, am I willing to take my bump and go stand in that classroom and teach? And I've seen principals do that. I've seen principals go teach for a teacher on a special occasion. So, I think, I think we can work through the details of it by all means, but it does move us, I think, to that conversation to say, hey, get rid of a policy that kind of creates some negativity. I think high priority days, blackout days create some negativity with the morale versus saying, let's talk about whether it's professional, be here or not.
But I agree. I have to jump out.
Yeah.
I agree. But what I fear may happen is one principal at one side says yes to the Palm Springs shopping day and another principal on a different side says no to a teacher who are their best friends and they were going to go together. And then it's, right? And then it's, there's not equity. There's, then there's an argument that there's not equity across campuses, that all principals and that, that doesn't bother me. I think that's where I, the decision's being made at the lowest possible level. It might make sense for campus A principal to say, yeah, have fun, spend all your money and campus B principal to say, no, I really need you here. And, and I respect that level of authority. That's where the professionalism of, of everyone involved has to come in.
Yeah. And I think, I think we would have to, in the administrative side of life, put some guidelines to helping them how to make those decisions. And, and there is a priority of waiting out your, your building and whether or not you can, or let a teacher go. There is a priority. If it's a test day, I would be hesitant to let a teacher not be there.
And, and, okay, I have to jump in again too, because the other thing that we have to be cognizant of is that if an entire campus decides that they want a particular day off. What kind of message does that send to the parents who are sending their children to our school at that campus? So that's, again, a principal has to be.
If a principal signed off on all of those, that principal needs to take a walk.
Okay.
Again, leadership has to be held accountable for that because that is not in the message. So back to our filters, is that a student-focused decision to let every teacher take on?
Right, right. Got it. Board member.
I just want to be able to point to you about on the equity issue. I, I don't want that to be out there. I, I think that's the wrong way of looking at it if you're the teachers. So I didn't want to have that kind of stain out there that that's the equity we're looking for. Because to me, I'm like, that isn't what equity is about. That's not what the definition of equity is. So let's, as professionals, not anticipate that.
I, yeah, I, I would agree. I, I like the philosophical shift that this discussion has taken as opposed to the, the high priority days, blackout days, whatever you want. It's very consistent, I think, with what this board has expressed as where we want to go in this district. And that is strong, well-trained site leadership that is instilling and implementing professionalism at every level in our district and at our campuses. So, I like where this is headed very much.
By the way, I just want to say this, teachers don't like to be absent.
Well, no.
I'm just going to say that on behalf of teachers. Anybody that's been a teacher in a classroom, I'll tell you, it's so much harder to come back after being gone today. We don't like to be gone.
Some kids feel that way too. It's too hard to be gone and catch up.
Piggybacking on what you're saying, the flip side of this is, as you were saying, some teachers don't like to be gone and, and maybe principals need to tell their teachers, you need to go home because you're sick or you have a medical issue that needs to be handled and it's more important for you to handle that than to be here. So I think.
It does. And I just, I just, you know, for the, for the record, want to say that teachers on the whole never like to be absent. It's very difficult to hand these orders to a substitute and then correct the next day. It's hard work.
However, I will add, and I never saw, when I first got on the board, I never saw that this was two boards, two boards, three boards ago, the data behind it. But the example that was always brought forward as to why we need the high priority days was the Phoenix Open.
I've heard that about Scottsdale.
And, and I never, it was always the anecdote, it was all, but I never saw the data, what was our absenteeism that day? Truly. And that's, that is what was described to me as what led to the implementation of these high priority days.
I remember that.
Remember that? So, and I don't know how.
That was a board to go to as well.
I remember it so well that I thought I saw data.
Every district has, when you look at the tenant searches, you can almost track the high days. And I will tell you, like, after we hand out contracts, we can track high absenteeism. We can track those who have decided not to come back and how high the absenteeism occurs. So we always tell schools, look, hey, when you're not using any in August and September, we rolled those budgets to the next year. Because when the flu season hit, I don't want the sick teacher in the classroom getting the rest of the kids sick. I want that teacher to take that time. And so, we, as principals, you'd have to say, look, hey, I know you're dedicated, would you please go home? You've got to, and, and I, and you have to coach that teacher to do what's right. But I will tell you that there are peaks and lows and it will, it will be interesting to look at absenteeism and, and now pull that data, because I haven't looked at Scottsdale's absenteeism. I confess, I've never looked at our absenteeism, but we will, we'll take a look at it to see, is there some day that seems to be higher? We'll go back in time and see if we have that. I don't know, but the T P C, I had heard Scottsdale liked the T P C.
I think that goes back to John Barr's days.
Oh, that's John. I'll give him a call.
And to that point, that's, for me, that's an example of where you're providing information or a tool for the site leaders so they're informed and can make decisions. It's back to shifting, which I really appreciate, is authority with responsibility. And we've already agreed board meetings ago that we're increasing the expectations as well as the compensation of principals. And this is very commensurate in terms of what an expectation should look like. So I think this is the right direction.
And offering the proper support for them. And so they can be successful in that leadership.
So, question. One last question then. So since the policy is our responsibility and it's very minor change, but yet the process, which is in the handbook, is what's really important here. How will, will we see, will, will we as a board get that back to us at some point within the year, within the school year, to say, we've trained the principals, we've provided them budgets, like, then the next year we're going to move forward? Or will we not hear it again since really our responsibility is just the policy?
Your responsibility is possible, I think it's our responsibility to inform you of the implementation of a policy. So as we develop the system, I think it's important to come back and share with you how we will train and implement any major change. This, this would be something that would be changed for next year, not this year. So, we have time to develop that process.
Is that all you have, Ms. Marshall?
That's all we have for today. Thank you for having the discussion and feedback.
Any other comments?
No, I want to thank the team and to your team when you meet with them this week, thank them again for their time and their service. We're going to, you know, try to get all of the 20 people who volunteered to work on policy throughout the year. We're going to work on personnel, we've got some student policies that need to come forward as well. Just expect about every board meeting, you're going to have policy. And lots of policy work this year.
And Dr. Bergwell?
Yes, Dr.? Board member. Hey, doctor. There you go.
To that, to that point, I think the board would like to send their appreciation back to this group because apparently you put it out there, you got a handful of people and this is heavy lifting in terms of them taking on the responsibility for their peers and so it's much appreciated at this point.
Be sure to share that.
That's correct.